Very much everybody here, Mr. Mahan is going to be a little late. His wife had to work late, so he's got daughter responsibilities. So at this time, if there are no objections, I'd like to call a meeting to order. Roll call please.
Brian Geezy.
Present.
Cody Brabilske.
Present.
David Schmidt.
Present.
Brian Mahan and I'm present.
For those who are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Pat Reseski, proud new grandfather, can we go to work first?
Self-discipline. Self-discipline means self-control. It is doing what you really want to do rather than being tossed around by your feelings like a leaf in the wind. You act instead of react. You get things done in an orderly and efficient way. With self-discipline, you take charge of yourself. You are practicing self-discipline when you use detachment so your emotions won't control you. Speak and act calmly when you are hurt or angry. Create routines that bring peace and order to your day. Practice moderation. Do what is expected without anyone watching over you. Do things on time. Affirmation. I have self-discipline. I use my time well and get things done. I choose my actions with detachment.
Thank you very much, Pat. Self-discipline. Order of Education Guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members. We work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. At this time, we have a public comment period. We can move on to the CWSA update. And we are privileged to have in our presence this evening one of our CWSA governance council members.
All right, so we do have unfortunately a very large update today. As many of you know, our new teacher Emily Radke has left us. Kind of a shock and kind of left us in a hard situation, but we're working on it. Terry and Nathan have been really great in the past couple of weeks, working really hard to get the word out, to hopefully find someone. We do have one candidate that is hopefully going to be coming into the classroom on Friday to talk with students and kind of work with Chris Goodwin a little bit and kind of see if they would fit together. We unfortunately only had one candidate and that is kind of sad, but the times right now. So we're working with him to see if that would be something that we can make work. Right now, Nita Kirst has stood, has really stepped up and she's been in there in the classroom since day one this year with Chris and that's working really well. They're doing well together, so I just heard that she will be doing another week for us. So next week will be her last week and I'm sure she'll be able to fill in if she needs, if we need her to. But it's been very challenging on the council side to kind of be thrown into this and kind of see what we need to do and how we need to help. So that's where we are right now. Fortunately, the year is going well for Chris. He's really stepped up and we are really very, very thankful that he has stepped up the way that he has and he's been a very good constant for the kids from last year, you know, past few years and now new students that he has this year, they're really, really seem to be working well together. So that's kind of where we are. As challenging as it is, we are at a new school year and we will figure it out.
Sounds like very, very big odds, but I'm really glad Mrs. Kir stepped up and helped me out.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
I want to congratulate you for working through these tough times and, you know, give a, add a way to Mr. Goodwin for stepping up too.
Yes, we are extremely thankful to Chris. He has been, he has been great with taking on extra and, you know, figuring out what to do and really stepping up. So we're very thankful that he has been, has been doing what he's doing and we hope that he continues. As challenging as it is for him too, being in the classroom and, you know, not having that balance that him and Emily were really good with, but we'll figure it out. So hopefully this new person, Brian, will work out and he'll be what we need and work for the year, so keeping our fingers crossed.
It's a pleasure to have you here because if not for the operational referendum, you have some difficult decisions. So this is a celebration.
Yeah.
In fact, familiar facing some struggle.
Yeah.
A celebration that the program is still going and I want to thank you guys.
Yeah, and we have a lot of students this year. We have 26?
26.
26 students, which is way more than I thought we were going to have at the beginning of the year. We have 10 or 11 virtual and then the rest are in the classroom.
About nine virtual.
Nine virtual, okay. Seems to change. But yeah, so that's, I mean, it's, it's going well, so that's good.
Thank you, Amy.
Next, for overarching results. Today, we're going to be speaking with our board.
Well, no, actually overarching results, we have Nathan first going to share something about the.
That's right. And.
And really, the message we're looking at right now is all students are creative, self-directed thinkers, prepared for and able to adapt to a changing world. So in this changing world of COVID, Nathan is going to take us on a little trip to AMS, I think.
Okay, well emphasis on changing world right now. Putting this down in order to project properly. And this is a tough time with all the changes. Normally, we would have, you'd rather see staff here than me and I can't blame you for that one bit. However, with everything on everybody's load, what we decided to go with this for today, I'd like, we made a video about how things look at AMS. We had Mr. Mahan in about a week ago and he's been following and hearing what we've been doing, but when he actually saw some of these, he's like, wow, that, you know, he said it makes more sense when you see it. So I decided to share that report today. I made a video of what a lot of the changes and what AMS looks like. And when we're done with this, we're also going to post it to our AMS Facebook account. Just as parents have also heard of the structures, but what's it look like to teach and do different classrooms and stuff like that? So just as a note, we're in the Zoom presentation. Zoom does not play well to video and so Mr. McKeever is putting the link to this video in. It's in YouTube and it'll be in the chat section. So for those who are online who would care to watch it, it might be a little stuttery if you try to watch it over Zoom, but you can sort of bring it down and watch it on your time and then we'll just give a little lag time and come back. We've been getting a lot of practice with that, so. Hey, everybody. So as you know, we've had to make a lot of changes at AMS and CWSA due to COVID. In this video, I'd like to show you what a day now looks like here and how it's playing out. Check it out. In order to minimize cross-infection spaces, our students spend the majority of their day in one classroom and their teachers rotate to them. Although these students are learning science right now, throughout the day, they will learn math, social studies, and English here as well. In grades six through eight, students only leave the classroom to head to FIED, band, music, or art. In grades four and five, all of the classes except for physical education are held in the classroom. A major change we made this year to combat crowding is asking our students to walk only one way in our main hallway. As this map shows, our students can get anywhere they need to in the building by following our central loop in a clockwise direction. So in order to give our students as much variety as we can, we hold as many classes as possible outside.
Go ahead and tell your neighbor what you think of good words in the pride of Hungry is and why. And we have to play band outside.
Uh huh. How do you play band outside?
It's cold in the morning, so your fingers get cold, but it's not my friends.
Now at AMS and CWSA, in order to keep our students spaced out six feet apart from each other, we have split them over two classrooms that are connected by an active video feed.
They're real lucky, they're worse. More is made mostly out of corn syrup, sugar, water, and gelatin, that might be.
Your teacher is using a documentary camera in one class to go ahead and generate discussion while in the other class, the students follow along with the video feed and respond as well.
What else should we know about the good words?
Gelatin.
I know that they're good.
In addition to our standard setup, each grade level wing at AMS has one large double classroom that allows all of the students in a given homeroom to fit in one room.
Maybe a reading in here?
This year at AMS, only one grade level at a time will be in the lunchroom or any of the recess area. The lunchroom at AMS is naturally split into three levels, lower, middle, and upper. And this works wonderfully for separating the three homerooms into which each grade level is separated. So what do you think of all these changes and how it's different this year?
Um, it's new, but at lunchtime like this, sometimes we have to spread out and I wish I could like talk with my friends. Like there's only two person at the table, that's a bit frustrating.
It is. Is there anything you like about it that's different?
I mean, I can still talk with my friends, so it's not that bad.
It's a little weird that there's only two to a table.
Yep.
It's talking about lunchtime.
So is that a good thing or a bad thing?
I mean, indeed it's a good thing. It's a good thing. And then also a bad thing.
And a bad. At AMS, we're very fortunate to have a very large outside playground area. Just like in the lunchroom, in order to limit the potential spread of COVID, we've split up our playground into different areas by homeroom. And we've split up the areas by advisory so we can tell who gets to turn where at what time. In preserving this three-part structure, we're blessed to have three separate gym areas, the two halves of the big gym, together with a multipurpose room, which helps us keep each advisory apart. So thanks for joining us on our quick tour. If you have any questions, we'd love to talk to you. 715-886-8040. All right, you have a great one.
Very nice.
Any questions from the board? Again, you've heard it in update version, but it helps to see sometimes.
All I know is I, I talked to my neighbor today just before I came over and she's a new student over there. It's her first year, she's a seventh grader. And I asked her how things were going and hers, her face just lit up. She said she was, she says she's, she says it's great, she's having a good time and she goes, she says, I told her I was going to the board meeting and she says, don't do anything bad. I don't think she wants school to end. So, yeah, so, you know, she's usually a pretty quiet kid, but she was really, you know, really excited. Things are going well from what I can tell, but it's kind of weird not being over there to do the greeting in the morning though, let me talk.
It's kind of weird not having you over there to do the greeting in the morning, so anyway. But I go with the student who took, said, it's a good thing and a bad thing. I think that pretty much sums up.
Yeah.
You know, as we're making adjustments and doing things, but on the whole, we're able to have a structure that the students are just glad to see each other.
Right.
And things are moving along pretty well. Again, we've got our hiccups. We've got some things that, you know, most ti, seeing as how we changed, and every building has changed every single routine over the summer, there's a reason you don't change those so much year to year. There's, you go through a bunch of drafts, you get a bunch of hiccups that you learn how to make it a little smoother. And we'll be working on that all year, but it's been going, it's been going well and I've appreciated the work that everyone's put in.
Thank you very much. That was very informative. It was good to see those kids and the teachers. I appreciate that. That was a nice, nice picture. Any other comments, gentlemen? Mr. Nathan Swenson, we represent the floor of yours, sir.
All right, well, we're seven days into the school year. I think it's going well, no matter what's going on. Teachers and students have done the best to make it work. I believe Schoology is a better, the learner platform we're using this year. A little bit more straightforward than Google Classroom. And I think the cohorts, no matter how inconvenient they may be, it works and you're able to get things done. Most things have gone well. I will say some, I think the administration has a bit of problem trying to separate kids out here during lunchtime because that sitting apart from one another falls apart within a matter of seconds. But besides that, it's going well. I don't think they're having too many issues with students or anything. And myself, Elise Waltonberg, and Emma Fluno issued a proposal to Mr. Johnson and some others about clubs meeting in person. And I'll say, Mr. Johnson and Ms. Baldwin would have been very good to work with on that. They've been very flexible in working with this because we all want clubs to be able to meet again. Besides that, everything's going well and hopefully can continue on a good path here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What did you think about that staggered start with, you know, coming in that day just as a class?
Oh, that first four days?
Yes.
I think that was nice, more so for teachers so you could, you could focus on a certain group of kids. Got each grade level adjusted to what the new, new normal is up without having 375 kids here at the same time. I think that was a, it was a late idea, but I think it was a good idea.
Thank you very much for that feedback. We're glad you're part of this team and, you know, feel free to bring, keep bringing those ideas and thoughts to us. Ms., uh, Mr. Brian Jones.
I have to go to the restroom later, so I'm just very.
Very good. Ms. Lynn Knight?
So I'm going to stand because I want to take off my mask. So there've been some changes to our school nutrition area and I just wanted to update or just kind of give kudos to Connie who has left the kitchen. Connie started in January 25th of 1993, so she was here 27 and a half years. The past couple of years, she was an employee in Tager, but she was always in her school district. She was a powerhouse in the kitchen. She was a master at her chili, her cookies, and her chocolate cake. I'm sure everybody has tasted her magic at one point in time, but she has never failed to remember the admin building and she always brought us treats, which we appreciated. But her number one priority was always making sure that the kids were fed. No matter what challenge we gave her, she made it work. A perfect example is the recent pandemic school closure. Within days, we had a drive-through open at Humke and a couple of weeks later, we had our delivery service. So from March through August, the school nutrition team served over 68,000 meals, which is Connie. I mean Connie led that drive. Connie and I have worked together as long as I've been here, which is about 12 years. We went through a few DPI reviews together that really stressed her out, but we got through it unscathed. Connie had an opportunity that she couldn't pass up and we couldn't be happier for her. Personally, I will miss her tremendously. She was a wonderful worker. She, she knew school nutrition inside and out and I will miss her. With that, with Connie's opportunity, it left an opportunity for the school district. So Tager hired Heidi Richardson as the new school nutrition director for Nikusa. Heidi lives in Friendship and has years of experience in the culinary kitchen. Although this is her first school district, it's not her first time around the kitchen. Heidi hit the road running. She's in the process of learning her staff and each school's food service protocol and working on a meal drive-through process for our pandemic virtual students. This year, we are also blessed to have another review by DPI, which is every third year. So she's nowhere, just going to dip her right into the fire. We're happy Heidi decided to join our district and offer her expertise and if you ever see her in the buildings, please welcome her. So thank you Connie and welcome Heidi.
Thank you very much Lynn. And looking forward to meeting Heidi and yeah, I think we'll all miss. Connie. Connie, thank you for your service to our district and we wish you the very best. Lynn, thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to policy governance, OE5, treatment of students. Mr. Ridmore, do you want to talk a little bit just kind of interview students?
Absolutely. So the policy statement is annually, the board shall assure that the district administrator has established and is maintaining a learning environment that is safe, respectful, and conducive to effective learning. So what we look at every year is the climate, making sure that we are working hard as a district to support and encourage high student achievement, which also is reflected in our results policies. And one of the tools that we've been using across many years is the Student Gallup poll. So we certainly last Thursday had a chance to talk about some of those numbers and also heard from the principals about some of the pieces that they've added to this year to support teaching and learning and encouraging and supporting high student achievement. So one of the things that I thought was interesting last week as we've looked at, now for the first time, we're looking at the Gallup, having all students, 512, take the Gallup survey. I really am excited to see, to really focus in on moving that needle around student engagement and certainly the buildings work on that every single year. But now that we've got everybody taking that survey, those survey results, this really, this year ends up being, or last year ends up being a baseline for that. So it's interesting. So what is hope? Hope is feeling enthusiastic about the future. So right now, we have 37% of our students that are feeling hopeful. So that means they're enthusiastic about their future. And the other two areas where students can choose, one area is if kids are stuck and then another area is discouraged. So the way Gallup defines discouraged is reluctant to take risks. So I'm excited to see what happens in that area, but certainly any comments from the board or principals for that matter, or Mr. Grill, treatment of students?
I enjoyed hearing Mr. Spring and Humke talk about the support and encouragement of the students and the teachers role modeling that back over to the students using the CARES. I enjoyed hearing about that and seeing the progress of that being taken place.
Very good.
You know, I, I'm also curious to see what the cohort model will do for this, you know, that this, looking at hope, looking at, you know, encouragement. So it's going to be interesting to see what happens. And I guess it depends upon how long we're in cohorts, but I gotta believe there is a lot more relationship building going on with the cohort, so it's going to be interesting to see. I don't know, Keith, if you want to add anything to that or Nathan at the middle school?
Yeah, I'm excited to see it as well. I think, you know, the advisories at the high school have existed as they are for, well, this is our fifth year with advisories where the advisory students stay with their teacher for all four years, generally speaking, all four years of their high school career. So I think that has gone one ways already. And then obviously, you know, as Nathan can attest to, your students are spending a much greater amount of time this year with their advisors. So I, you know, I do think the relationships will be much stronger, but that being said, I think they have gotten stronger over the last several years and Olivia certainly as an advisor could speak to that. And Jen, you know, works with ACP and has been involved with advisory and has been an advisor herself as well.
You know, I think we made mention of this last week, Thursday, that, you know, when we were talking about this four or five years ago, the discussion was somewhat difficult, but this is something that's being lived in every building and demonstrated in every building and it's something that the data here supports that. And it's just, it's a really neat thing to see the progression that we've made. So I want to thank every administrator and all staff members for really working on this and making it a priority. Thank you. At this time, I'd like, any further discussion points, gentlemen?
Candace, were you, did you want to say something about their magic?
Sure. At this point, I'd like to call a promotion to approve OE5. Next one we have is to communicate.
Oh, you got to vote.
Oh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I missed one meeting and I go all the heck. OE9 communicating with the board. This is one that is definitely a strength that policy governance has, has brought to us. The policy statement indicates that annually, the board shall assure that they are fully and adequately informed about matters relating to the board's work and significant district concerns. And since policy governance was created, we have a 12-month calendar that defines the areas comprehensively that we look at. So every 12 months, we're looking at these defined areas and I'm more empowered now as a school board member than I ever was. To date, 10 operate fluctuations have been submitted and approved. This, this is, it links right into the district evaluation. The communication that Terry has with the board informing us about the district activities. He's using a board update and I want to, we also, last year, we had suggested that some of the financial things come in and I want to congratulate Lynn on, on the work that you've put into that. Just call upon, just what's been accomplished is amazing. I look forward to reading what, I'm amazed at what you do. The more I learn about what you do, the more confused I get.
What we all do.
Yep. I want to thank you for that, those updates as well. You know, they really help us become more informed of the boards and then we're able to make better decisions. Bellboard members, any comments, suggestions? Thanks, weaknesses?
My only suggestion was to Terry last week, just referendum, updates and like the building stuff. I know you're working on that, so, but the updates have been really, really good, so thank you guys.
Yeah, that's on my list to do, definitely. I want to get that done. And Diane, if you spoke any.
One thing that, that we did talk about too, as well as the updates with regards to the tech ed program as we move along, you know, some of that, again, it's referendum material.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
So that's.
Kevin, Keith is on that. I actually met, I sat with the tech ed teachers over at our new teacher.
Sure.
Meeting tonight and they're working on it, so.
Fantastic.
And I, I actually told them that the board would love to be invited down there to see the current technology and equipment down there because they're, they're laughing at some of the equipment that's there. So we may have an invite where you can come in and see it before and then the plan and then after.
Very good, very good. Anything else, gentlemen? At this time, I'd call for a motion to approve GP-8, Board Member's Code of Conduct. No, excuse me, OE9 communicating with the board.
Go move. Second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. GP-8, Board Member's Code of Conduct. Terry, do you want to?
Sure.
Amy Codi, do you want to, oh, Codi, do you want to?
All right.
The policies.
The board commits itself and its members to ethical, lawful, and professional conduct. The board commits itself and its members to ethical, lawful, and professional conduct, including proper use of authority and appropriate decorum. Just a few examples here. Accordingly, board members will represent the interests of all owners of the entire district. This representation shall supersede conflicting loyalty to other interest groups and affiliations. Board members may not attempt to exercise individual authority over the school district except for set forth in board policies such that, in some examples here, interaction with the district administrator, interaction with the public press, and discussions with and about the district administrator and staff will be respectful at all times. Lastly, members shall maintain confidentiality appropriate to sensitive issues and information that otherwise may tend to compromise the integrity or legal standing of the board, particularly those matters discussed in closed session.
Thank you very much, Cody. This is a strength of this board. There are the issues that are brought forward are germane and definitely have been brought forward and the proper, proper form. This was emailed to all board members. There were no violations reported, no findings. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? This is something that we need to work diligently, you know, every month when we come to the meeting to make sure that we are living by this, by this, by this code of conduct. At this time, I'd like to call for motion to approve G P, board members' code of conduct.
So, second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Other board work? At this point, I'd like to turn the floor back over to Ms. Lynn Knight.
Okay, so this is the short-term borrowing that we do on an annual basis. So administration is recommending approval of the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed 1.9 million, issuance of tax and revenue anticipation note, promissory notes, and participation in the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes program. So this resolution is basically pre-authorizing the borrowing and delegated authority to myself to sign off on the issue that is being sold on October 8th. But I have a little caveat because, because we passed an operating referendum, I'm not really sure of the dollar amount. Now, we borrowed 1.9 million last year, so that's what I put this year in an amount not to exceed. Now, that will probably change and I will keep you updated on my, in my board updates. I'm in the process of looking at the budget, working with PMA, trying to figure out our low point in the months of November and December. And once we figure out what the low points are, we'll have a better handle on how much we really need to borrow. But this just gets the ball rolling so we can start, you know, working on our borrowing.
Fantastic, fantastic. At this point, I'd like to call for motion to approve the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed 1.9 million, issuance of tax and revenue anticipation promissory notes, and participation in the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes program.
So, second.
Rule call vote, please.
Brian Geezy.
Yes.
Cody Budowski.
Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Motion carried. Uh, seclusion, Henry St. George, Mr. Brian, go.
All right. Jesse Kasher.
Terry, can I do that?
Yes.
I'm good. I got you.
All right. So every year, I come to you with the annual seclusion restraint report because under Act 125, the district has a responsibility to report out how many students have experienced seclusion restraint within our schools. And as part of this report, there are a few areas that I have to report to you on every year are the training requirements, guidelines, reporting procedures, documentation, and then the data. But last March, there were some updates made to Act 125 that I want to really inform you guys because the data may look different from here forward because of the changes that were made. So one of the big ones with the definition is because prior, when you have a school resource officer and things like that, a school resource officer may use different strategies to work with a student that we are allowed to use in the school. But now, if they use a strategy involving seclusion restraint, they have to follow the same guidelines that the school follows in reporting and informing families of those incidents of seclusion restraint. So now, if, you know, Joshua does this, this situation, or even a police officer from the community, since it's happening in our school, they would have to follow the same reporting requirements. As well as part of this, and we don't have this challenge because we don't have any private schools in our area, but private schools as well, now their numbers, if a situation were to occur at that school, that becomes part of our district data. The only private school situation where some of the data does become some of ours, we do contract for a few seats out at Wood County Alternative. So if an incident of seclusion restraint were to happen there, that also now becomes part of our data. So just so you know, moving forward, all of that will now play into that, not just anything that happens at Humke Alexander at the high school. Documentation. So one thing prior, when we did a incident report, we previously just had to tell parents that a report was available to them and they had to request that report. Now that report is automatically given within the three-day timeline. So the timeline is the same. We have to call a parent within 24 hours, have a written report completed within three days, but now we have to provide them that report. The other part two, they never required processing meetings after. Why did this occur? What can we do differently next time? How can we help this student? So now, within the law, it states that the principals are required to have a processing meeting with the team that did the seclusion restraint within 24 hours after. And you have to talk about what is, what happened that led to the incident of seclusion restraint and what can we do differently in the future? So DPI and when they made this change in the law, really wanted to take a proactive approach to say, what can we do differently to keep these incidences from occurring? And as part of that as well, for students with disabilities specifically, if two incidents of seclusion restraint occur within the same calendar year, we have to meet within 10 days of that second incident, we have to have an I P meeting and say, okay, what do we have to do differently with I P to make sure that the student is getting the services that they need? Training, here was a thing that I'm glad they entered in and it's something we've been doing for a long time. So for us, you have had myself, Mr. Johnson at one point, and Mr. Rogers at another point. We were your district crisis prevention institute instructors. We use the nonviolent crisis intervention training. And as part of the training, now they're saying you have to have a part where you teach staff how to verbally de-escalate a situational equation to avoid going to restraints with students or secluding students. And it also says, how do you also have discussion afterwards to process a situation, look for patterns and things like that? This has been part of our training for years. So the training that we have used fits these requirements well, so we don't have to make any changes there. And I know Dr. Black has attended the training and many of our teachers have, we have over 30 staff trained. So really, you'll notice in a little bit, our trend of seclusion restraint because of this training has gone down drastically over the last five years. The data reporting, so I mentioned this earlier, we include private schools and Wood County Alternative. So the last part two, I've always broken down the data for you, number of incidents, students with disabilities versus students without disabilities and all that. Now they're requiring us to do that breakdown, but that's always how I've been providing you the report manually. I always break it down, how many per quarter, things like that. And now two, this data is being uploaded into a system with the state. So before, I just had to give you this report. But now, every December, I will have to take these numbers and submit them to us. And our deadline used to be September 1st and now it's October 1st. So any questions about the law changes?
Okay.
Sure, go for it.
So is the, the data you upload to DPI, is that going to be accessible to the public?
So yep, that will be through the public wise dash. So that will be out there.
I really like the fact that we have over 30 staff trained. I think that's huge, so thanks for doing that.
Yeah, no problem.
Is that, that's not the norm, is it?
No.
Other districts?
Many districts, they, because in order to perform seclusion restraint, you have to have this training. But we as an admin staff and we're teachers have said, some of that verbal de-escalation strategies are great tools for teachers to have, even if they're not doing, even if they're not doing the restraining. So some teachers, we strictly have them licensed for the verbal piece because that's just good resources to have. It's more tools you have in your toolbox to help you in the classroom. So we didn't want to just limit it to just these few teachers. Other questions about the law? All right. Going into the actual data this year, you will see in 1920, we had zero incidents of seclusion and one incident of restraint. So you can see the five-year trend there. We really have dropped because in 1415, we were at 48 incidents of restraint. We were down to one last year. So why is that occurring? You know, I really thought about what, what things have we done and put in a place to help us get to this point? And you know, I said, you know, the middle school and high school have done a lot of work around the universal systems of support. You guys have talked, heard me for years now talk about the multi-tiered systems of support and responsive classroom and conscious discipline and how we're putting those universals. So kids are responding to this and knowing, here's why I can do what I can get when I'm angry or when I'm frustrated. You know, we provide professional development to our staff around trauma-informed care and recognizing signs when kids are escalating. The behavioral intervention is providing that just in time. Hey, you may need a break, let's go for a walk, process and come back to that task. And then two, thank you both, because that's a big help, is that 30 staff being trained and us talking about what can we do differently and what tools do you have? And I'd say another one, and a small caveat, COVID-19, we weren't here for a few months. So that helps the numbers as well. But I think that's really low on the list compared to the work that our schools have done to really say, how can we work differently with kids so we don't hit this point of where we're restraining kids or secluding kids? So I think the numbers this year show a great trend of how the last five years, between training and playing universal supports in place, shows this multi-tiered system of support is working in this area. There's other areas where we know we have to improve, things like that, but for this, we really are making sure kids are safe in their environment and they're not hitting that point of being harmed to themselves or others, that we have to use these strategies. Any questions?
Here's to comment, you know, on both your work on this, Brian, and, you know, not only to yourself, but to all administrators and all the staff members, to take this so seriously. And, you know, it's part of our culture. And that responsive discipline is such a huge part of it. And it took a while to get through, but I think we're starting to see, we're seeing the results. So thank you for the diligence on everybody's part. Thank you.
And I emphasize one point that Brian won't bring up himself, is that he is a phenomenal trainer. We trained three staff last year and one, no, about four, anyways. I had a couple of teachers who didn't need it, they just wanted to round out the toolbox and they came back saying, wow, what, you got any more of that? And, you know, just the work that Mr. Grill has done is just is a very, it hits well. He's a great trainer and part of the reason why it's working well is, you know, him being who he is too.
Thank you. Thank you, man. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, thank you.
Well, I've got one thing. Hey, Brian. Put it in, don't fix it. Okay, keep it going. That's all I can say.
I agree with.
Except for COVID.
Except for what?
Let's fix that. Hey, you can fix that and give you a pay raise, all right?
All right. Challenge accepted.
Thank you so much, Brian.
Thank you.
Wellness committee update, Ms. Candace, real?
Well, if I could just front load real quick, so every year, we give an update, it's part of the calendar, right? And Candace has been our chairperson for the last couple of years and has really taken the wellness committee and our work beyond the district to other districts and UW SP and built some strong partnerships. So as part of this nutrition plan audit we have this year, they give us a checklist. So we're doing something different this year. Candace has gone through this checklist and our wellness policy and really looked at our wellness policy in comparison to what the auditors are going to be looking for. So it's a little bit different twist this year. She's going to just be sharing things off this checklist. So thank you, Candace, for being here.
Yeah, and Audrey and I, she was my intern last spring, we did a presentation, kind of gave you guys the updates and stuff like that. So you were able to hear what we were doing. But as Terry said, we have the checklist, there's 12 points on the checklist. And I basically took our wellness policy and I tore it apart and I categorized it all and I made a sheet that was, I think, in the agenda for you, if you wanted to look at it more detailed. Overall, we cover a lot of areas of the checklist and we're very good to go, we're set. The, there was the last three areas of the checklist, which involved other school-based strategies, the tri-narrow assessment, which is what this is, and then updating and informing the public. So these three areas, we don't have something specifically stated in the policy currently, but we are actually doing a lot of these things. So what it comes down to and in other areas within the policy itself, policy just needs an update. And so that's going to be our, my work this year with the wellness committee is taking this guide and really updating it so that it is current and a little breathing document again versus something that's been on the shelves for a few years. So that's where we're going with it. So again, like updating the public and stuff, that could be as simple as having a website, which we have, it's just not in the policy. So all the work is being done, it's just we got to make it more cleaned and polished at this point. Our wellness policy did go through scanning through UW Madison. And so with that, we did score well with this current kind of outdated policy. On a comprehensive score, we scored a 54%, or 58% nationally is average is a 54 and statewide is a 45. So it's already above what an average would be. And it was the same with strengths, which again is kind of our wording, so that'll be another part I focus on, is kind of beefing up some of those stronger words that they look for. And we were above the state average for that. So we have very good solid basis and we're just going to work to make it even better.
So the checklist that Candace is talking about, that is directly related to the school nutrition review that I talked about with Connie. So we will most likely get written up over our wellness policy because it didn't hit all of those items in the checklist. So just be aware.
So when does that take?
This year, I mean, we have to have it, it should have been approved already this year. So, but they came out with a lot of that stuff very late.
Yeah, and we did get an extension, so our final update would be June 30th, but yeah, it's going to be done way before that.
Yeah, for the school nutrition review though, and it was, they're reviewing this year. And they want everything updated effective 7/1 of 2020. So, and it's fine, it's not like we haven't been written up over that before.
Learning, learning opportunity. Thank you, Candace. Thank you, Candice. Any questions on that policy?
I'm still remembering, you know, what you reported on last year and I just want to thank you for your continued, continued efforts in this area. It takes somebody like you to keep it going.
I appreciate Candice taking this on so much. I can't even tell you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, we need to call for a motion.
No, that's just.
No, just an update. I got a motion to approve one to one violation.
I should, that shouldn't be on there, Brian.
Okay, that's okay. We're going to move on to the P126 Education For Employment Plan.
And Mr. Johnson is here for that and it looks like Jen Jackson's joined us, so. Do you want to take the floor on that?
Jen is in, well, for question. So PI 26, if you remember, this is an annual, the plan that comes forward about how we as the school district are going to be implementing. PI 26, which is the employment for education, our education for employment, academic and career plans are part of this as well. If you look through the report, you can see it has the job market study that comes from workforce development. Jen is the one that does the tremendous amount of legwork on this and puts the report together and works with a lot of the ACP work. One thing that I do want to highlight from this year that is really exciting, Jen worked with Fox Valley Technical College to get our career and financial literacy approved as a personal finance class so that now every senior, it's a required course for graduation, every senior has the option to take that as a dual credit, meaning they can get high school and college credit. And so that, that is really exciting. Jen did a lot of work to get that part and Jen has done a lot of work on the PI 26 plan each year. And I guess, you know, turn it over to any questions and certainly Jen, if you have anything you want to, to add, but this I think will continue as our CTE department continues to get stronger with Mrs. Naro, Mrs. Jackson, and then now Mr. Kind and Mr. Plummer will continue working on implementing, implementing this plan. And then of course, our academic and career plans run predominantly through advisory. So that's a quick overview. So Jen, anything you'd like to add?
Only thing would be, it's really awesome that Mrs. Naro, she is once again offering certification through DPI with assistant childcare teacher. So that is exciting and we have Pro Start certification now in the culinary arts. So those were two areas that I think Pro Start was a long way before I started at Nacusa and we have not had assistant childcare for at least, I want to say, two to three years. So to bring both of those certifications back is really strong in our family consumer area.
Very strong platform and we thank you so much for the work that you do in this area. Any questions? This time I'd like to call for a motion to approve P126 Education For Employment Finance presented.
Go move. Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Thank you.
What's that?
He said aye.
Oh.
Thank, yeah, thank you, Keith.
Thank you guys.
Yep. Jen, thank you so much. Consent agenda donation, Cody.
Backpack for kids, we have $50 from Linda Odell, $65 from Bethlehem Women's Emissions, and Elaine Wolf donated 50 homemade face masks. So thank you to our donors this month.
Thank you very much, Cody. And we noted Regina and Emily, we wish her the very best. Any other discussions? At this time, I'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Go move. Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carried. Future agenda items, next month, we are going to be changing the date of our meeting, The October 15th Board Workshop is a week later, correct, Diana? And then our, our annual meeting is going to be on the 22nd. This is so that we have the actual data in hand before we make the decisions. Too many school districts go ahead and make the decisions and then have to come back and do this whole exercise again. So the annual meeting will occur on October 22nd, 2020, certify the annual tax levy, Roman update, rule of the budget, budget summary report, and cert college.
Is that at 6:00 or 6:30? Do we always set that?
We set that at 6:00, I think.
The annual meeting's at 6:00 and the regular meeting's at 6:30, correct, Diana?
Yep.
So the workshop then is what date?
15. 15, 6:00, 6:00 PM.
Yeah. Thank you.
And at this point, I'd like the consideration of motion to adjourn the closed session pursuant to 19.851(c) Wisconsin statutes to consider employment promotion compensation performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government, the body has jurisdiction or executive responsibility to assist to consider possible employment. Motion on the floor.
Go move. Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, roll call, please.
Brian Geezy.
Yes.
Cody Budowski.
Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
I will guess.
Motion carried. Well, I want to.
Nathan, I come in here today. Nathan went to see you. Fly at school.